All right. Well, go ahead and turn to John, chapter 16 in your Bibles. And tonight, uh, tonight's gonna be a kind of, I say this every time, and I feel like I'm a liar every time I say this. Tonight's gonna be a quick one. We'll see. I think it's gonna be a quick one. Uh, it will be rapid fire. And it's gonna start slowing down in the coming weeks, but we're still just scratching the surface right now. And this would be, we're scratching the surface tonight as to some things that we're gonna get to in the next couple of weeks. So, uh, John, chapter 16, once again, we're gonna look at verses 1 all the way through to verse 15. All right, y'all there? Here it goes. Starting in verse 1 of chapter 16, it says, "I've said these things to you to keep you from falling away. They will put you out of the synagogues. Indeed, the hour is coming when whoever kills you will think he is offering service to God, and they will do these things because they have not known the Father nor me. But I've said these things to you that when their hour comes, you may remember that I told them to you." And here we go. This is where we're really gonna pay attention tonight, uh, to the subject matter. "I did not say these things to you from the beginning because I was with you, but now I'm going to him who sent me, and none of you asks me, 'Where are you going?'" "But because I've said these things to you, sorrow has filled your heart. Nevertheless, I tell you the truth. It is to your advantage that I go away, for if I do not go away, the Helper will not come to you; but if I go, I will send him to you. And when he comes, he will convict the world concerning sin and righteousness and judgment concerning sin, because they do not believe in me, concerning righteousness, because I go to the Father, and you will see me no longer, concerning judgment, because the ruler of this world is judged. I still have many things to say to you, but you cannot bear them now. When the Spirit of truth comes, he will guide you into all truths; for he will not speak on his own authority, but whatever he hears, he will speak, and he will declare to you the things that are to come. He will glorify me, for he will take what is mine and declare them to you, or declare it to you. All that the Father has is mine, therefore I said, 'He will take what is mine and declare it to you.'" All right. Mouthful there. And of course, that was Jesus speaking to His disciples there. And tonight, we're going to look specifically at the ministry of the Holy Spirit. And this is really gonna be a 35,000-foot view, okay? Uh, an overlook at this subject tonight, because in the following weeks, we're gonna break it down into different categories. And we're gonna look at the works as they're related to categories. For instance, uh, well, we'll get there in a second. So, so anyway, tonight's gonna be brief, okay? And it's gonna be pretty quick as we get down in this bottom half of our notes, because we're simply gonna just list off the different works of ministry. Uh, but there's, but, but it's gonna give us plenty of Scripture too, at the same time, that you can study throughout the week leading into next week. You see where I'm going with this? You'll have, you'll have all these Scripture references, and I'm gonna encourage you to go throughout, from, from now until next Wednesday, and look at all this Scripture, and look at how it applies in the spots that you'll, uh, see it, see it in in your notes. And so, as we just read in John 16, and specifically verse, uh, 7 there, where he says, "Nevertheless, I tell you the truth: it is to your advantage that I go away; for if I do not go away, the Helper will not come to you; but if I go, I will send him to you." Okay, so specifically in verse 7, we see that Christ mentions that it's, it was to their advantage that he would depart, so that he could send the Holy Spirit. And as we take a look at the ministry of the Holy Spirit, uh, we get to see base, uh, really a basic summary presented of what Jesus meant when he made this statement. And so, I wanna remind you, uh, that, that this is part of the role and order of the Godhead. As we talked about role and order in the first session, this, this falls under that line. The work of the Holy Spirit falls under the cat, or the line of the role and order of the Godhead. Uh, that the Holy Spirit has a role specifically in the arena of the redemption of man. And so, we call this the ministry of the Holy Spirit, or it can also be referred to as the work of the Holy Spirit. And, uh, it's, it's gonna be through the breakdown in the coming weeks that we're also going to address the false views of these areas. There's, there's many false views related to the work or the ministry of the Holy Spirit. So many false views. I'd say there's probably more false views than there is correct views of the work, uh, in the ministry of the Holy Spirit. So, we're gonna address those. We're not gonna address those tonight, though. We're not gonna mention that tonight, but we will, in the coming weeks, confront those with Scripture. It's not gonna be Stephen's opinion on these false, what I, what I'm calling false views of the works of the Holy Spirit. We're gonna see, here's the view, and here's, uh, here's why it's false according to God's Word. And I've actually heard, as of yesterday, I saw this, uh, posted on the social media machine, that there's gonna be a class, possibly. They're, they're looking for interest in it, okay? There, there's gonna be a class in our city, in Ashland City, being taught on the subject of deliverance. And I don't know if y'all are familiar with that, but it's an, it's really an old, but now kinda refabbed, uh, false teaching that's getting, it's gaining popularity really quick in our society. So, we're gonna address that, especially since we may have some of that teaching coming into our community. And, um, and so, that will be addressed in the coming weeks also. But, but specifics like that, like the topic of deliverance, we're, I, I've talked to you about cessationism, if, if, and we've even done a study on that in the past, but we'll, we'll go in a little bit more into that. That's the idea of how does the Holy Spirit work in the life of the believer today? Do the apostolic gifts still happen, uh, in, in the life of a believer today, or have they ceased? You know, speaking about things like tongues and, uh, that, things of that nature. So, we'll, we'll address all of that, but not tonight. Tonight, we're gonna give the overview of the ministry of the Holy Spirit. So, now to our notes, okay? When speaking of the ministry of the Holy Spirit, uh, or the works of the Holy Spirit, this is number one on your notes. The work of the Holy Spirit is the means by which all that Christ accomplished comes to benefit the elect. So, so this is, when we're talking about the work of the Holy Spirit, the idea is that this is the means by which everything that Christ has accomplished, it, it comes to benefit the elect. And if you're, if that word elect happens to scare you a little bit, uh, understand this first of all, that that is a word that's used in Scripture multiple times. But also, to put it simply, this term identifies those who are truly God's people. When we, when we use the word elect here, it's talking about, there's no doubt that we're talking about those who belong to God. And so, whereas in, in the church today, for instance, uh, there's church members, right? Or there's people who attend the church, or you can even, even call themselves, "I'm a Christian." Where we have that going on, there's always a chance, and there's probably likely a high possibility that there are non-believers within our midst, uh, on any given meeting time. On Sunday morning, maybe even possibly Wednesday nights. And so, there's, there's a high possibility that somebody would call themselves a Christian and not be a believer. And so, when we use the word Christian, for example, uh, this, this is somebody who might be in the church circle, that, but that's not actually born again, but they claim to be a Christian, if we just say that in a broad sense. But Simon the Magician would be a good example of this, right? He, he believed, was baptized, joined this Christian circle, he followed around, and then what happened? He was confronted, and, and in his confrontation, it was said, "You better pray that if possible, God can forgive you of this sin of yours, if even possible." It was said right there, after this man believed, was baptized, and hung out with all the other Christian people, that he was not a Christian, he was not a true believer. So, that's a possibility of people who proclaim to be Christians. And so, I wanna, I wanna really segregate out the word, the general scope of what we see as Christians today, 'cause everybody claims it with the word elect. Because when we use the word elect, there's no compromise for that word. It's most certainly those who are in Christ, as Scripture says. Anytime that Scripture talks about the elect, it's those who are God's people. And we gotta remember too, at the end of, like, I'm not trying to draw a line here and say, "This person's the elect, this person's the elect, that person's not." That, I'm, I'm not saying we're gonna do that tonight. I'm just saying that we're, we're gonna draw the line of, as, as we talk about the Holy Spirit in terms of using these kind of words. So, uh, we gotta remember, it's at the, at the end of our life, it's God who makes his final judgment on our life as to whether or not we're his, right? And so, the difference in words here is that when we speak of the ministry of the Holy Spirit, we're speaking about the ministry of the Holy Spirit to God's elect. And, and a person that comes and feels appused with no real change of heart, does not, they don't benefit from these works that we're gonna talk about tonight. They, they don't, uh, 'cause if, if they're not the elect, they could eventually, if they were the elect. Do you get what I'm saying? Does this make sense? Are you following me here? All right. So, that was a really long explanation to talk about the word elect, but sometimes people get a little jumpy when you use that word, especially when you got a lot of free will Baptist churches around. And, and so, uh, just wanna clarify that when we say elect, it means people that are truly God's. There's no, there's no ifs, ands, or buts, there's no, uh, maybe, possibly, that it's most certainly God's people. So, anyway, back to reiterate the first point, I may, the work of the Holy Spirit is the means by which all that Christ accomplished comes to benefit the elect. So, then that brings up the question, what are the works of the Holy Spirit? That's a easy question to ask, right? If you're gonna say, "Well, these works benefit the elect," then what are those works? Well, as much as I would like to go ahead and throw these works that we're gonna mention tonight into different categories, uh, some actually blend into more than one category that we're gonna mention tonight. And so, for the sake of not getting repetitive and our notes lasting forever, because you're putting the same one over and over again, we're, we're gonna break it down, uh, not into categories tonight, but we're gonna do that in the following weeks. So, next week, we'll, we'll talk about specific categories. So, uh, just to keep it simplistic, for the sake of our study tonight, the easiest way to see the works of the Holy Spirit is to break it down into four categories. Uh, that's, that's the, the Holy Spirit's works can be broken down into four major categories. That's number two on your notes, four. The first one is justification. And this is, this is kinda crazy, because I'm going off, off my notes here, but my mom called me. She usually calls me with like a theological question, um, and she was talking about the subject of justification. And so, uh, that was a, we're gonna talk about that in next week. So, I was like, "Watch my thing next week." But that's A. B is sanctification. That's another area of works. And if you don't know the difference between the two, I would strongly encourage you to come next week, and the week following. Uh, C is empowerment. That's another area that, a major category. And then D is coinonia, okay? That's the Greek term, but for us, we'll just put community. That's what it means. Coinonia is a gathering, a community. And so, those are the four major categories. And so, as we take a broad look, we're gonna now list the different works of the Holy Spirit in the lives of the elect, okay? And there's a lot of them. I'm gonna warn you. If you look at your notes, it doesn't stop on the first page, it goes all the way to the back. So, there's a lot, uh, and we're, we're just gonna work our way down the list. And once again, I wanna encourage you strongly, okay? I don't know what your study time looks like throughout the week. I don't know if you're like filled up with like Bible study after Bible study after Bible study, uh, or not, or if like this is the only time you're touching the Bible throughout the week. I don't know. But here's my encouragement to you. Look at these verses. And as we go through in a minute, and as we're, we're laying out these different works, look at that verse with, with a lens on, uh, trying to see how that work is played out in these verses, okay? But the first one, and once again, we're gonna study these in more depth, but this is the overview. But the first one is, "He adopts." And I'm not gonna break any of this down tonight. I'm simply listing it, because it will be broken down, trust me. And well, it's not, we're not gonna spend 20 something weeks on this breaking it down. We'll, we'll put a lump of them in each category, starting next week with justification. But he adopts, that's the first one. The second one is, "He baptizes." And fun fact, while you're writing down the word baptize, baptismo was a trans-illiterate word to baptize, which, to baptize, the, the proper translation for it, as we baptize people, as, as talking about that goes, it means to fully submerge. That's why we don't sprinkle, just fun fact, okay? Number three is, "He bears witness." He bears witness. And you got quite a few Scripture references on that one. Number four, I love this one, "He calls to ministry." And that could be whether somebody's called to be a pastor, whether somebody's called to lead out in an individual ministry in the church. I don't know why I'm laughing, uh, but, uh, there's a, he, if, if you ever feel the leading of the Holy Spirit calling you to ministry in any way, shape, or form, it's probably a good idea to listen. Number five, "He convicts." Probably if you get called to a specific area of ministry, and you decide to ignore that, you'll find yourself under a sense of conviction. Okay, I told you I'm not breaking these down, and they, I just, uh, anyway. Do I need to mention the ministry team thing again? Number six, "He empowers." Those can, all three kinda go along, okay, I'm done. He empowers. I told you, we're going fast tonight, okay? I'll kinda watch when your pens stop moving before I go on to the next one. Number seven, "He fills." And you're like, "Fills what?" Well, we'll explain it, I, I promise, but not tonight. He fills. I mean, you got a lot of reading to do. There's a lot of Scripture here. Number eight, "He guarantees." He guarantees. Number nine, "He guards." The next one on your list, number 10, "He helps." He helps. Just stop for a second. We're already at 10, and just look at that list so far. Just take a look at that list. This is such a gift of God to us, if, if we really take a minute to think about it. Number 11, "He illuminates." He illuminates. And I'll warn you ahead of time too, part of the reason why there's so much, um, wrong teaching in the area of the works of the Holy Spirit is because of some of this language. There's, there's a sense that, like, if, if I just say, "He illuminates," there, there's a bit of ambiguous language with that, that you're wondering, what, what does that even really mean? And so, when people don't study these in proper context, like what we're gonna do in the following weeks, that's, that's how the false teaching comes, because there's a misunderstanding of the actual work itself, the way that we word it out. Number 12, "He indwells." He indwells. 13, "He intercedes." And we talked about that quite a bit. I've mentioned it, I think, on Sunday. I think I mentioned it a couple, uh, both Wednesdays possibly, but we'll, we'll get deeper into that too. 14 is, "He leads." He leads. And some of these are self-explanatory. We can kinda figure out what it's getting at, where it's going, but we will dive deeper into all of these once again. 15, is that where we're at? Okay, "He produces fruit." I'm not gonna sing the song again, but it's fruit of the Spirit. And let me, okay, we won't, no, I won't get it. Now, I'm gonna say it. You know, when you're talking about what, what fruits are you seeing come out of your life because you're a born-again believer, and then somebody corrects you, it's like, "It's not fruits, it's fruit." It's like, okay, sorry. I guess the plural for fruits is fruit. Is that correct? Fruits, is that not a word? Huh? Frit, frites? Oh, yeah, yeah, we'll go with that. That was a side note that probably shouldn't have happened, okay? No, the six, number 16 is, "He provides spiritual character." 17, one of my favorite words that you hear me use a lot, "He regenerates." It's just kind of a cool word, you know? I mean, it's got an even cooler meaning, but "He regenerates." Number 18, "He reminds." And then number 19's a two-parter, but I, I just put them on the same level, because when you see Scripture referring to this, it's usually in tandem, okay? So, "He restrains," but he also convicts of sin. So, he restrains us from sin on one hand, but he also convicts us of sin. We have this conviction that comes about us when we do sin. Number 20, "He resurrects." 21, and we're getting close to the end here, "He reveals truth." He reveals truth. Number 22, "He sanctifies." And that's kind of a, I kinda cheated there, 'cause that's a whole category of itself, but there's also an individual aspect of this too. So, we had to list it. Number 23, "He seals." 24, we're almost there, "He selects overseers." And we won't so mu, well, we'll kinda get into that one a little bit, but pretty much the idea behind that is, uh, the oversea, do y'all know what the overseers are as, as it's referred to in Scripture? Shepherd, yeah, so specifically, it's, it's the pastors of your church. There's a few different words that, that we get the word for pastor from, uh, so, but overseer is one of those words. And so, the idea is that he selects overseers. And so, that means for your church, uh, you, you had a search committee that brought me here, but, but they were led by the Holy Spirit, uh, to, to continue in the process with me. I had a desire to come here, but it was because the Holy Spirit led out in that. And so, you know, you get in some situations where, you know, men just wanna go where they wanna go, uh, because maybe it's more money or whatever, or maybe it's, you know, the right scene. You know, we, that's why we gotta rely on the Holy Spirit, because we can trust that the Holy Spirit knows what he's doing, right? And so, uh, I'm very glad that the Holy Spirit selected me as an overseer here at this church. Uh, number 25, "He sins." Sins, S-E-N-D-S. Yeah, not sins, like S-I-N-S, wow, the, sendz. I gotta enunciate better, yeah. He does, Holy Spirit does not sin. He sendz with a D and an E. Now, I gotta be careful on that one. I'm glad you said something. That'd be horrible if y'all wrote, can you imagine later on tonight, you go back over, you're looking at your notes, you're like, "I don't think that one's right. I don't think anything you said is right now." Okay. Number 26, "He strengthens." And number 27, one of the amazing works of the Holy Spirit. I mean, this is really, truly an amazing work of the Holy Spirit. If you think about just how it all works, he teaches. He teaches. And so, that's a huge list right there, 27 of them. I think I put 20, do I have it all? Yeah, 27 of them, he, he, that's a huge list of the works of the Holy Spirit. And this is, remind you, in each individual life of each of God's people. It's not just like a blanket thing. He's working individually in people's lives in this kind, in these ways. And so, it's a huge list, and like I said, we're gonna take a closer look at each, uh, at each one. Most of these kinda lumped together in categories the next three weeks, or maybe four weeks, I mean. And, uh, so, we're gonna do that, but, and I'm gonna warn you too, okay? So, like, we're gonna start with the area of justification, but I'm gonna warn you, when we look at the area of justification, I want you to walk in here with an open mind, okay? And why I say that is because some of it might come to a, as, as a bit of a challenge in your understanding, depending on how you, uh, just the theology that you've taken up throughout the years. As we look at different aspects of works of the Holy Spirit in the life of the unregenerate turning to regenerate, there, there's some aspects of that that are hard for us to really, like, have an open mind to and, and really, uh, fathom even. And so, I just want you to come in with a, with an open mind, of course, always, we'll always look at Scripture to confirm that what we're saying is indeed the truth, and it's not just something, it's not just Stephen's opinion on how things are. Uh, I never want it to be that way. But, you know, depending on what method of theology you were taught, some of the work of the Holy Spirit in the, in the area of justification might be a bit of a shock. Uh, but, but I've already said enough there, so I'm gonna move on, okay? I'm gonna leave the rest of my thought, maybe just as a cliffhanger for you to come back next week, 'cause you're like, "What, where are you going with this?" So, this, there's your cliffhanger, but as we, we're gonna close out tonight, and I'll open it up for questions. But as we close out, I wanna encourage you, once again, look at this list, okay? Look, look at all this list throughout this week, going all the way to next Wednesday. We didn't really hit on much, we just listed a bunch of stuff tonight, okay? But your, your study begins when you leave here. And, and once again, one of the works of the Holy Spirit is he teaches. But you have a guide, and, and in your guide, you have it listed, okay? This is what I'm, this is what I'm looking to see in this Scripture. I'm looking to see how this Scripture provides the answer to how he does whatever it is that I'm looking at. And if you run into any challenges with that, with seeing that, write it down and bring it to the next, to the next meeting, and we'll address it. But look at that, and, and just look at it through the whole, you got plenty of time, a whole week's worth to look at it. But, uh, let me ask you a question tonight. As you see these works, are the works of the Holy Spirit, when you think about your life, are they evident in your life? Can you look at this list, you can say, "Yeah, I see how he's working in my life. I can see how he's working in my life." Can you say that without a doubt? Uh, not even having dove into the depths of, of the meanings of these, just looking at it, just looking at it from this surface look. Can you, can you look at these works and say, "Yeah, the Holy Spirit's working in my life"? I, I hope you can. I hope you can say that tonight. Uh, if you can't, if, if you're looking at this list, and you're saying, "I don't see any of this in my life." Well, the, the call then is repentance and faith in Christ. 'Cause the Holy Spirit will work in the life of the elect, will work in the life of somebody who's truly born again. And so, the call is repentance and faith in Christ, if you don't see this. But do you see these works in your life? I hope, I really hope you do. And I hope that as you see, And I hope that as you see the works in your life, and I hope that as we go through this study the next couple of weeks, and as we really break it down into categories, and we dive into kinda the depths of the meanings of these works, and the actual action of these works, and what it really looks like, and we address falsehoods, I hope that through that, one, we're more aware of the Holy Spirit working in our life. I think a lot of times, we just take for granted what God's doing in our life. Do y'all agree with me on that? God's working in our life every day, and we can so easily take our eyes off of his glory and just go on with our normal life. And so, I hope that as we look at the works, we're more aware of how he's working, but we're also more on the lookout of how he's working. I'm not gonna go all experiencing God on you here, okay? The Blackaby thing. I'm not gonna go all that route. Okay, there's some things that are good in that whole study, and there's some things I strongly disagree with in that study. But I think that, as a whole, we can look at how God's working in our life, and if we understand the work of the Holy Spirit in our life, it makes that a whole lot easier. But is the Holy Spirit working in your life? That's the question you need to ask. Study this this week. We'll come back, and we'll talk about the area of justification next week, and we'll put some of these to the, put some meat behind them, I guess. Let's pray.